Sorry about that.
It's not a bad idea.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
It's called a meeting to order. Please write in and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions, deletions, changes of the proposed agenda for this evening, is there any? Nope. Roll call.
President Schneider.
Present.
President Protem Dyke. Councilmember Alec.
Present.
Councilmember Kalka.
Present.
Councilmember Feldman.
Present.
Councilmember Glasser.
Present.
Councilmember Stifler.
Present.
Communications that were done for this meeting. Regular meeting minutes for the September 6, 2022 village council meeting. One little one. Under regular agenda, item number one on page three of our packet. Alma DDA Director Kim Shaw requested that council approve the, I presume that word's supposed to be closure as opposed to closed? I didn't see anything else. Anybody else in council? See? Thing to discuss, question correct? What? General fund?
Page two. Page two, like the third one down, it's only $234, but what are safety supplies?
Probably glasses, gloves, that type thing.
Major streets, local streets, Parkinson Recreation Fund, Downtown Development Authority Fund, wastewater treatment plant, improvement project debt, water tower debt, sewer fund, water fund, equipment fund. Payroll register report. Water report. Saying pretty consistent. DPW August monthly report.
Just a quick question. I know that we asked for a little bit more detail, but it looks like it was just more bullet points. Really not more detail, it's just more bullet points. Not being super picky, but, I mean, okay, so instead of five bullet points, we got 10. If we could get some detail around what that means, I don't know what most of this stuff means, I think I do, but I don't want to guess.
Kim, recall in the past, I think one of those occasions where you were pushed into acting manager job. Weren't you having regular meetings with department heads and then filling in what happened at those meetings with department heads? So you get something more than just the bullet points, did I recall correctly?
Yeah, we would have a department head meeting and then I would incorporate what was discussed in the department head meeting into the manager report.
So, so those reports which you edited, put together, were more than just the bullet points we're getting now?
Correct. I mean, the DPW, these monthly reports haven't changed. It was just the detail in the manager's report. I included what transpired in the department head meeting.
So, like supplementing?
Yes.
The monthly?
Yes.
That's just a suggestion of how to approach it. Something, something different. Okay. Wastewater Treatment Plant Report. Police Report. Did you want any input on as far as police report? Did you want to comment at all?
Andy, I don't know if this was passed along to you, but one of the discussion items that we had was on the police report, just having more of a narrative as far as goings on, as far as the police department trends, what you're training on, that sort of thing, as opposed to the Excel spreadsheet format, kind of similar to Officer Amanda's reports where it's just more detailed on, you know, like what's going on. For us, at least for me, I can only speak for myself, this one doesn't really give me a good picture of what's going on, what the priorities are, what some of the challenges are. So if that's a monthly thing, a quarterly thing, an annual report, I think, feel like council would find that helpful to understand a little bit more about our department and their activities.
Want that for the public to know that? Or just the council?
So if it's included in this packet would be obviously subject to public.
Yeah, it's public.
Information. So yeah, I'm looking for like details of investigations or anything like that, just more even maybe just an analysis or explanation of some of the numbers that were presented with. So look at, you know, looking for ideas from you as well as like what, what you want to communicate to us, what we should be aware of.
Sorry to interrupt, or what you would want us to convey to the public if we were asked what Thelma PD had been up to. Right now, I mean, we can tell them, look at these numbers, but they're not, it's not going to tell them a whole lot.
So I, I think the police chief may have been touching upon a subject which is, has national attention right now with FBI, Justice Department, whatever. What that, what I'm interpreting, Andy's response was methods and sources, sources and methods, where you're revealing things that should not, maybe not necessarily be open to the public. So I'm sensing a little concern on Andy's part regarding that, what exactly you're going to be saying. I would feel more comfortable just first in the council, not the public.
Not sure with FOIA how that would, unless it's something that you just want to come and update us on. Verbally or in session, I'm, I'm not sure what.
I know like with me, it wouldn't be, I mean, I get it, you wrote, you know, if you arrest somebody on a felony warrant, I don't need the details on that, I don't, that works in this, but if you get that day of, you know, I don't know, some training or, you know, like when you go over the new body cameras, I mean, instead of just marking it down as training day, you know, but, you know, one or two, it's not going to be a very big report because obviously a lot of your stuff doesn't need to go to the public because of the investigations or, you know, the sake of people's personal information. I mean, it's like you said, it's a tough one. I mean, that's what, I mean, I would use your best judgment on it and we'll kind of feel it out as it goes and don't put anything in that can't go to the public for now. That would be my I mean, I know with the, the school, the one we get from her, that's pretty detailed, but I mean, that's, I mean, that's her day in the school, but. Simple stuff too, because we used to have a fingerprint machine. It's broke. We don't use it anymore. We got to go down to 23 in Van Dyke to get our fingerprints done. I didn't, I'm on council and I didn't even know that.
Right. That's been broke for.
That's the point.
Yeah, 10 years.
That's the most important, yeah. Those sorts of things I'm thinking about.
But being on council, I thought it was still going in until, until, until somebody I know needed to get fingerprinted and said, why, we can't quit Almont anymore, the machine's broke. I was like, uh, uh, oh. Or even stuff like that.
Gotcha. $1,000. That's the answer. We didn't want to spend the money. So I think, who, I don't think any of us police chief at that time, were you?
Yeah. It was a prior. Police chief.
It's been broke that one. Right, okay, okay.
persuaded that we should not invest more money in that endeavor. I suppose we could always change our position on it.
That conversation, I don't remember it being brought to us that it was ever broke.
Yeah, I recall there was discussion about that and it was decision not to go forward with the program. Because the program was discussed. It's open to discussion. At this time, if, if we think it's worthwhile, I don't know what the cost is, but yeah, I thought, I thought quite frankly, we were better off having the fingerprinting available here. A lot of communities had to come to us because we were one of the few in Alapier County. So if somebody wants to bring that up, fine. I'm all for it. Construction Code Authority. Oops, did I miss OEO report? I think I missed, yeah, OEO report. Ordinance Enforcement Officer, yeah. Oh, there we go, okay.
I did have a question about that. Did we purchase software to help track the, the OEO activities?
There was, Tom.
Not yet. I think we have been looking at a demo and we've been evaluating, we haven't pulled the trigger. Excuse the pun. Part of the reason that we pelt off, it's just a cost factor, is that you have the initial expense, but then there's an annual fee that is still pretty hefty. It's like, is that really, you know, an investment that's worthwhile for what we're tracking in our community code enforcement?
Yeah, I just had a question about it because I knew it was discussed and I thought we budgeted some money for it. Just wasn't sure how, how we were proceeding on that.
Financial Position Report. Entertainer motion.
Support.
Motion made by President Protem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Stifler to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion?
Just on the financial position report, I know that you say percent of budget on it is, and we can talk offline if you'd like, but there isn't an indicator if that's the glide path that we're supposed to be on.
If you look at the header, the percent of the fiscal year is completed is 16.99%. I use that as the gauge. It's usually what drives our budget amendments as well.
Satisfied with the answer?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Consent agenda is unanimously approved. Now's the time on our agenda for public comment for any item that is on our regular agenda for this evening. Is there any public comment this evening? None. Regular agenda items, second reading and adoption ordinance 155.3, the fire prevention code ordinance, which I believe is the adoption of the the 2021 International Fighter Code. And we had first reading on September, oh no, going back to August, right, August 24.
August 16.
16, sorry. And so this is second reading. So if we vote on this this evening, if we go forward, it will become enforceable for the ordinance. Discussion? It was, it passed muster at our first meeting where we discussed this. Any further thoughts or concerns as we bring it to second reading for potential adoption? There doesn't appear to be much indication, much indication from council that there's much to discuss about this. So we have covered that territory pretty well. Didn't you work on this a bit, Pete?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
And you're good with it? Okay, all right. So do we have a motion?
Number one, 55.3, the Fire Prevention Code Ordinance as presented.
Support that.
Motion made by President Protem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Kalka to approve ordinance 155.3. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Unanimously adopted. Regular agenda item number two, return activated sludge flow meter purchase. Who is making? Clint, are you making the presentation on this?
Presentation?
Yeah, sure. I mean, if you're so inclined.
Well, I have a printout of the new invoices. What we'd, we budgeted to replace them for this year and we had two projects from UIS. One for the equalization tank flow meter. As of April, it was 99.50 and that price has increased to 12,650. It's purely the flow meter cost. We're also having supply issues as far as getting some impellers for a return activated sludge pump that's out for rebuild. They're waiting on parts, they're waiting on parts as well. And the return activated sludge flow meter went from 51.90 to 68.70. That's a sizable increase as well. It had been budgeted to be done this financial year. And because of the importance of the flow meter, that we have accurate instrumentation on the EQ tanks and the RES flow meters, I was, I suggest we still go through and purchase that equipment despite the higher price, since the prices are continuing to rise. So.
Go ahead, sorry.
Attached are, well, it appears the two new invoices are attached. Prices are going up across the board for any type of equipment. So I suggest that we go through with the purchase.
Kim, if we pass it, will it require a budget amendment?
Well, in the first quarter, it'll be in the first quarter budget amendments, yeah.
Budget amendments, I've got a overall question on all the wastewater treatment projects tonight. I'll clarify by saying I support all the projects because they need to be done, but my math might be off, but my math right now is our budget amendments are going to total $20,305 with all of the assorted things we're going to approve tonight. So I guess my question today to Kim is, when we say we're going to do a budget amendment next month, where are we? If we're approving this tonight, we got to pull that money from somewhere, so what's the plan on that?
Typically it's equipment fund, but let's hear from the people who handle it.
It's the equipment fund.
Yeah, it would be reserves for the appropriate fund, which is more than adequate monies in the sewer department for that.
Each member said we're going to do a budget amendment, but no member. So this is what the total of the budget amendments are going to be. And then, and they're coming out to be about $20,305. That includes the 3,000 contingencies on the furnace jet.
When our audit is the next, our report's next meeting?
The 18th.
That's usually what helps clarify for me, like, okay, where are we at?
Exactly, exactly. But going in with all this expenditure, with, with all the rising prices and everything going up, I think it's important that we have a kind of. But it, it's going to be more than that because down on the other line item that we haven't talked about, the HVAC system's on there too. I included, yes. You're saying 20,000, that bid's 29,000 on its own. I missed, I missed that part. Okay, so we're talking 40, 49,000 instead of. Which, I mean, it was all budgeted for, but there is the increase in that one too.
So the, the question I have is 32% increase on the activated flow meter, 27% increase on the equalization tank, which, okay, that's a little bit ahead of inflation right now. I, I really beat these guys up on their quotes here a little bit because you don't know what increased by that much. If it was fully 27% on the equipment, because it's hard to get stuff, you can't order it long with, et cetera. You can't tell if it's on the equipment or if it's half on labor, half on equipment, because they roll it all up as one number and throw it at you. I mean, is it more expensive for them to hire somebody? Or is it just that the flow meters themselves are going up that much?
The company has said that the flow meters are the main cause of the increase, but I would imagine there'd be some increases on the labor as well. The advantage of buying them through UIS is that it's all one company and they warranty, they warranty the parts they install and, and they're able to tie it in with their system.
I guess, I guess my point is just in the future, if we can ask them to give us a breakdown, a little bit more clear of, you know, where, where is it going up, A versus B?
I mean, I'm not speaking of that kind of equipment. I can tell you truck equipment, some of that stuff's went up 90%. I mean, so I mean, with everything jumping, it's just, I think it's a more like, how bad is the part really needed is based on how much they're bumping price. What they can get away with. They know you got to have it, so.
Yeah. A lot of them, a lot of them are taking advantage of that, unfortunately. But yeah, we can pay the price. Anybody, aside from Pete's questions, towards Clint, anybody else have any questions of Clint regarding what he has presented to us this evening? We're getting the flow meters. Anybody else? Not entertain a motion.
Is the motion going to be for line item two and three then, since we just discussed both?
I would do them as two separate motions. Please.
Let's, yeah, so it's your motion with regard to return activated flow meter, flow meter at the price presented by the vendor.
I'll make the motion that we approve the purchase of the return activated flow meter in the amount of $6,870.
Made by Councilmember Stifler, supported by Councilmember Glasser to approve return activated flow meter in the amount of $6,870. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objection? Next is the equalization tank flow meter.
And for the equalization tank flow meter for the price of $12,650.
Support. Motion made by Councilmember Kalka, supported by President Protem Dyke, I think, to approve the equalization tank flow meter for some of $12,650. $50. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Opposed? Unanimously approved. Okay. Moving on to regular agenda, item number three, EQ flow meter replacement. Who's making the presentation? Sorry? Oh, yeah, this is separate. Yeah, so moving on, above ground storage tank, underground storage tank removal.
So EPA passed, EPA's been cracking down on underground fuel storage tanks because they leak. And as a whole, they're moving to above ground tanks. We had our tank examined, our underground one. It was found to be in good shape, passable shape. However, because of the trend of converting to above ground, and after talking to a few different people, including the underground tank inspector, inspector, which you think their interest would be in us doing business with them to comply our underground tank. We've, they've suggested that we move to an above ground diesel tank to comply with the new rules. And that's to feed the standby generator for the plant.
Can you give us any information on the new rules?
They want a level sensor of some sort, such as a digital level sensor. They want spill protection, which may, which may be encapsulating the fuel tank. Or it could be a simple catch basin up top where the, where the fuel, where you put the fuel in. And they want pressure test on every biweekly to ensure that the diesel fuel doesn't leak past the tank. So what we have proposed here, originally we'd budgeted, I believe it was 10,000 to comply the tank with the new rules. As there's a, there's a no fill order on the tank, so we can't add any diesel fuel right now. And we have about six days of operating time left until we run out of diesel. So we contacted Oscar Larson Company for the complete installation and wiring of an above ground tank. And that would include the excavation of the below ground diesel tank. We've contacted Oscar Larson and Company, RW Mercer and Matt Zach. RW Mercer did not want to quote it. As they ballpark, they knew they would come in high and would not get the bid. And we have Oscar Larson quote and a Matt Zach quote. That would allow us to put, it would just convert it to an above ground setup and eliminate the below ground. And since that tank is about 34 years old, installed it in 1988 when the plant was built, it could develop problems. It could crack and become unusable, which would force us to do this anyways. An above ground tank. And that would also keep the fuel fresh and below ground, there can be moisture, which can cause, which can cause the diesel fuel to go bad. So one advantage of the above ground tank is keeping the fuel fresh. It would, it would get rid of, it would excavate our 2,000 gallon underground fuel tank and replace it with a 1,000 gallon fuel tank. Typically, we keep no more than 1,500 gallons in the 2,000 gallon fuel tank anyways to prevent the fuel from going bad. And we would just have more frequent top ups of fuel. So the size is not an issue. So that's what we're proposing is, it's, you would think that putting in a fuel tank would be rather inexpensive as to buy a fuel tank outright is about $4,000 to $5,000. as to buy a fuel tank outright is about four to five thousand dollars, um. However, we need to ensure that all the EPA, the and the law of rules are followed, is, uh, you know, we, we need to do a proper installation. And they know what they're doing. Um, so we're proposing to go with the, uh, Oscar Larson quote. Since, uh, they, they're su- they're a very high-volume dealer, um. And we have, we have a working relationship with them. Uh, Matt Zach is coming in a little bit lower price. Um, but we don't know much about the company. Um, it could get done before the end of the year.
Could just been a big problem around the country for many, many years, so, it sounds like an endeavor to be wise to go forward with. So you recommending Oscar Larson, correct, Clint?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, I have questions?
My concern I have is that Oscar Larson's quote is July twenty-eighth, good for thirty days, at twenty-nine thousand two forty-five. The Matt Zach quote is September seventh.
Um, I did talk to, I did talk to Randy Spiller from Oscar Larson one week ago today, and he said the price should still be good, um. That's going on his word, and there are some contingencies built in the quote for runover costs. But we could get back to him and see if this price is, uh, still acceptable.
For accepting, um, Larson's bid, we can make it, um, contingent, and we, you know, a price not to exceed. So if they bump it up five grand, um, then we have to readdress it, whether we're willing to eat that price hike. I- if, if that were the case.
We don't think it'll go up by that much, but-
Right.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
Which fuel do you still have in that tank now?
Uh, we have about nine hundred and thirteen gallons. And that generator uses six-point-six gallons an hour.
So will they be able to put the new tank in before they excavate the old, so they can pump that fuel from that tank into the new tank?
Um, likely they would. Um, we did go over that, that, uh, detail, I would imagine.
And my only other question is, when you order diesel, do you order treated? Or do you just order whatever blend they're given?
Um, we just, we place an order for off-road diesel fuel, so it's-
I would start getting it treated, because then, like, even with a thousand-gallon tank, it runs, you get eight-hundred gallons in it, obviously, the temperature change, it starts sweating. The treatment is minimal to the gallon, I think it's three or four cents a gallon when you buy bulk to get treated, then you won't have the water issue. Um, especially with it being above-ground, you're gonna have to deal with, if you have a water issue, it is gonna gel, it will freeze up, and you will not run.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have had water issues with it for the past few years, of water getting in the fuel lines, um.
So, and I'm sure they're not gonna suck that tank out of the ground completely dry, because they know that the fuel is floating on top of the water, I mean-
Um, we did have the water test done, um, a month or two ago, and there's almost no water in that tank. They didn't find any. So, um, we're not sure how the water is getting in the fuel line. But you're saying that we could buy diesel fuel pre-treated?
You order your diesel fuel, tell them you want it treated.
Okay.
You know, for the water, and they'll mix it before they even bring it.
Placing the above-ground storage tank on, is it on the ground? Do we have a concrete or paved area? Where's this going?
It would be going next to the, the generator, um. Um, RW Mercer suggested that it could go on, um, that it should go on a concrete pad, um. I don't think it's in the quote. It's not in the quote, one of them, uh, Larson, uh, they had, uh, no, it was RW Mercer that was concerned about the, uh, concrete pad. But these other companies in their quote, um, it's not in there. Something we need to add some. And, um, I did talk to Randy Spiller about the concrete pad, and, uh, uh, he was just saying, uh, you know, he was disappointed we were taking a while in the quote. So, that was more of his, uh, yeah. It would be within five foot of the building. So, you're, so Melinda, you're suggesting, um-
Um, well-
Be within five foot of the building, though, with a fuel tank.
It'd be a double-fire wall tank.
Well, I get it, but it's still a fire hazard. Where does that fall with the building codes? I think some more research needs to be done on this before.
See them? Close to a building?
I tried doing it at my shop, and they had me put it a hundred fifty feet away. And that's only in Emily City Township.
It, sorry, um-
On tack, well, who, was it the fire marshal that said that?
Building Department.
Building Department?
One issue with placing the tank further away is, uh, running more fuel lines.
I get it, but we don't wanna set it five feet away and then have an issue with, um, I mean, now you have somebody else that wants to do it in town, and they go, well, the building code is-
I don't think the fuel lines can be run underground, because we wanted to place it as far away as we could. Um, which would mean we'd have to, they'd have to go under the driveway. There's, there's not a great spot for one, um. So as far as that concrete pad, should we go back and, uh, look at that?
I don't think it's a requirement. Um, it might be a good idea to prevent it, you know, giving it a good base to sit on as opposed to sitting on, on the ground, um, especially if it's gonna be near an area that was previously excavated and backfilled, um.
Um, it wouldn't be on top of where it was backfilled, um. But, um, are you saying from your experience, there's usually a concrete pad? Because I would out-
I see all kinds of crazy stuff.
I mean, I would expect the company to, to know, if they're writing this quote, we, uh, they know where it's at. So I would expect them to include everything in the quote. That, that's my expectation.
I don't, I don't think it's a requirement. Um, it, it might be a good idea, it might be worthwhile to find out how much it would be, but it's- I see them on bare ground all the time, um, my, you know, my concern is more of like stability. Um, it's a double-wall tank, so it's not necessarily leaking that be the issue um, during fuel transfer, that's when it's more likely to have an accident to occur. Concrete pad's not gonna stop that, um, from happening, um.
No, but it has the spill container around it, so, I mean, if it's at the tank.
If you put, yeah, if you put a concrete pad with secondary containment, that's gonna, that's what would prevent overfills from, you know, getting into the ground.
Um, there is a spill container on the quote here, um.
What's the spill containment?
That's what they got it on the quote, is a spill, they've got spill containment on the new tank. I'm assuming which is-
It's a double-wall, uh, that's all it means, it's a double-wall tank, right?
No, double-wall plus the spill container, it says. So it would be sitting in the tub. I'm assuming it's gonna be, like you see on the smaller tanks, a, a square wall, catch basin around it that's equal to a thousand gallons. Line six on the scope of work.
Hey Jim, I'm at your point, I also don't see on the Larson's quote where they talk about draining the tank, or on the other quote, it actually says on there that tank will be emptied by owner. So for me, I'd like to see Larson's actually type that on that quote, that we're not gonna be paying to get that tank emptied.
I just hate for him to bring a truck in and suck it out and take it away.
Right, and there's nothing in the quote saying either way. So I think we need more work on it.
It certainly sounds legitimate, I guess the issue that would be raised by suggestions that we need to do further oh, investigation back on information, um, is, so the invoice is dated July twenty-eighth, and I believe, um, Clint indicated that Larson was already unhappy with the delay in trying to hold it that price. And so if we, um, put it over, which we certainly can do, there's certainly the concern that the price jump up, that was July, and we still have a high inflation rate and-
Go back and check with them.
And so is that, uh, counsel's, uh, consensus at this point, that we, uh, table this to, um, do further investigation with building code issue and um, the issue that Wayne raised?
If we're seeing thirty, if we're seeing thirty, we should bullet point exactly, we should bullet point direction exactly what those bullet points are to Clint and Dave, so they can follow through on exactly what we're asking them to do. Because we've talked about a pad, we've talked about the building, we've talked about how far it can be from the building, so is, is counsel's two bullet points, the cement pad and the, um, concern about it being too close to the building, um, and not being in, in code with the building code? Is there any other bullet points that they need to follow up on?
That's very clear, I'd like to make this comment, Mr. President, uh, Randy Spiller of the Oscar Larson Company had a lot of conversation with the gentleman from Lara regarding this project. And so we're relying on that, you know, one-on-one conversation, what are the requirements for a double-wall tank? And the gentleman from Lara said it could be, uh, within five feet of the building. Now, as far as what our local code says, don't know, that's a good question. But, you know, according to Lara, they didn't have any concern with, you know, the fuel tank being as close to the building as five feet for, for a double-wall tank.
David, do you happen to know who he's, um, Randy's talking to at Lara?
It's, uh, Michael DeWise.
Wise?
Mm-hmm. I talked with him, talked with him a little bit, too, so.
She's in Lara, he's working for it. I mean, Lara's obviously huge.
Yeah, their storage tank division, I'm sure.
Doing now inside inspections.
My only concern with tabling this for another couple of weeks is that, we had this quote from Larson, as you see, back in July. In order to try to get three quotes, it's taken us this long to find qualified vendors to come to the table. And so, uh, you know, Larson was ready to do this, had access to a tank where they could have had a tank within one week at that point in time. And this project could have been done by today, uh, if we had pulled the trigger back in August. Uh, but, you know, trying to make sure that we had competitive quotes, et cetera. Uh, you know, this is where we're at. Uh, and, and, uh, in the next upcoming motion, we actually provided, uh, provision to allow us to have a ten percent contingency for, you know, things that may occur during the course of installation. I think if we had a similar ten percent clause for this quote, that it would cover some of the issues that are being brought to light at this meeting tonight. And that we would be, uh, well within that three-thousand-dollar buffer to take care of the concrete pad, uh, making sure that the, uh, company takes the fuel out and puts it back in the new tank, et cetera. Those are things that we can say. Our counsel approved the proposal with these following conditions.
Right, yeah.
We go back to Mr. Spiller and say, this is the way we're gonna run the business here, and, uh,
Yeah, I mean, that's my concern, too.
I don't have a problem moving forward like, like you're explaining, as long as they put it in writing on the contract, I'm, I mean, if they're gonna address those issues, and obviously, if they didn't quote for the concrete, I mean, it's not gonna be a very big pad. I mean, but if they do the pad, I'd like to see some curbing on it. I mean, like you said, is it gonna, is it gonna help? I mean, if it slows it down, that's a big help. I mean, to, to put a little six-inch curb around the top of it's not gonna add that much more money to it to have a secondary containment, which probably also the insurance company will like to see.
I'm sure as Councilmember Steffler is familiar with, uh, you know, the engineering consulting firms that we dealt with, trying to find qualified vendors, and all of them said, you should use the Larson Company. And, uh, and, uh, and everybody said universally that, uh, never have spills with the above-ground tanks, so, um, but, you know-
The problem with that is, that becomes human error.
Yeah, you're much more likely to have a release with a thirty, forty-year-old underground storage tank, yes. It, they're much easier to detect.
And as I kind of mentioned a couple of weeks ago, you know, this is an issue that we did have a lot of internal discussion, because the plan from our budget was to try to make the underground tank compliant. You know, it's gonna cost ten to twelve thousand dollars to do that. You know, at the end of the day, as we continued the research, you know, heard some of the concerns that were expressed by counsel, you know, were of the frame of mind that, you know, let's pull the trigger, let's do the above-ground tank, it's gonna cost more money. We've got monies in reserve that we can handle that contingency, uh, change, and let's get the job done. Uh, you know, pushing it back another couple of weeks, and it's like, you know, I, I'd like to try to avoid getting into the cold weather issue, because there are soil pourings that have to be taken as part of the compliance issue when you're taking an underground tank out of commission.
Seize contamination, toxicity. Is, is there a, do we have a council member who's willing to step forward and make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars and not to exceed ten percent over for the above-ground storage tank and underground storage tank removal with the Oscar Larson Company.
I'll support that.
Other conditions?
With the contingency on the conditions that we've discussed.
Um, motion made by Councilmember Alec, supported by Councilmember Colka, for the above-ground storage tank, underground storage tank removal after significant discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously approved. Regular agenda, item number five, wastewater, wastewater treatment plant, HVAC purchase, which I think in one of our recent meetings with, um, the furnace was colorfully described, so-
Yeah. I mean, the, uh, uh, as a, as a repairman would put it, it's beyond its life expectancy. Uh, the HVAC unit on the roof is highly inefficient, and, um, it, it's like, it can go no, it can go no more than thirty years, it's at thirty-four. It's like, it's half-working. And the pneumatic air controls we have, which were high-tech at the time, um, are no longer really being used. They're just, it's, they've all said, like, whoa, it's like, this is, it's like it, um, it's like an antique. Well, they said, they say it's a cool system, but, uh, it's not really common. it's not really common, and everything's, you know, it's electronic now. Um, our thermostat, if you move it, it just goes from hot to cold. There's no in-between. It's either, uh, it runs at this one temperature or the other. So in the summer, when it's, uh, warm in there, we'll turn the heat down, and then it's ice cold. And when we turn it back up, it just goes back to barely any cooling. So what we have here is a proposal, um, which we'd originally budgeted, uh, twenty-five thousand for, is, uh, the complete, uh, replacement of the rest of the HVAC system for the plant. We had the boiler replaced in two thousand twenty-one. If I could veer off this topic for a second, uh, the, our boiler was, uh, the coils were all eaten through, so we replaced it with a new boiler unit, which provides water heat to the entire building. So this proposal includes replacing the air handler, the air unit on the top, doing a pneumatics delete, putting on an electric thermostat, and putting a smaller, which, which was sized appropriately by Goya, um, they said a ten-ton was too excessive, since the HVAC unit only heats the lab, the bathroom, the office, and the sample room. So they're gonna downsize the cooling unit, and they said it would be more efficient, a lot more efficient, in their words. Um, it's probably more efficient, but to what degree, I don't know. Um, so it would, uh, they would, uh, replace the AC unit on the roof. So it'd be a new air handler, new AC unit, new controls, and it would take care of the, uh, heating issues we've had with the faulty coil. They grazed the coil, they, we did a simple repair on it. Um, they grazed it about six times before they got it to finally, uh, quit leaking. So the coil is shot in there. So we figure, um, we'll just replace it all, just start now, and it won't give us issues for some time. Because it's thirty-four years old.
So this quote also includes the boiler?
No, the boiler had already been replaced.
Twenty-twenty-one.
As in the quote, I recommend we go with Goya. Uh, they're the lowest cost, and they were the original manufacturer of the equipment. And they were, when they were out here, they were really comfortable looking at all of it. They know what they're looking at. So not only that, they're the lowest price. Capella's a little higher, um, and we had, I mean, and we had Walter E. Williams, which is the attached, uh, on top of your packets. Uh, that was the third quote that came in.
Is there a lot of asbestos that has to be removed?
Not that I know of.
Asbestos, no. I don't know if there's any. Oh, there's a lead time on some of the parts. Small lead time on it, um. I would, uh, expect them to have it done by the fall. I couldn't imagine them doing it in the morning. And I think we talked about it.
Questions from council members of Clint?
Only thing I noticed is that Walter is quoting a seven-and-a-half-ton unit from train or carrier.
They wanted to do a ton-ton because, in their opinion, the five-ton wasn't enough. So they did a stop measure, and they switched out the brand. Train? Uh, I thought they quoted, uh,
train system works a little different than the carrier system, and the only reason I know that is I used to work for train. Did they give you an efficiency rating on any of these units? Like ninety-five, ninety-eight, ninety-nine?
This is, uh, something I really think that needs to be done before, so.
Capella is quoting a ten-ton unit as well. I mean, they don't specify specifically, other than they say a train unit spec to by the current data tag. So if the current data tags are a ten-ton, then that's what they're gonna put up there.
I gave them the, uh, Goya proposal minus the price for them to work off of.
You said this William E. Walter one came in late anyways, right? So that one's out of the question anyways?
There's only so many, we've, we've called Ken's, Andy Saitway, and, uh, all the residential Ortons. They, uh, this industrial is a little bit out of their, out of their range. Um, they've suggested, uh, all the people who do residential systems suggest that we just convert it to a residential type, since it is small. But I don't know if we should do that, uh, because each one has their own idea. So each one's suggesting a split system, something else, something else. So, uh, that's why we're just gonna do, you know, stand in.